13th, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a short period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of that individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether or not you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to this item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our City Council Agenda for Monday, February 13th, 2023, is a reminder that we will not be meeting on Monday, February 20th, 2023 due to the President's Day holiday. Next would be the Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Good afternoon. Chairperson Ward, members of the City Council. It's really great to be back here once again, this time to share with you the winner of the Mayor's Awards of Excellence for December of 2022. And that award goes to Ron Truba, a fire captain with our Lincoln Fire and Rescue Team. He was nominated by LFR Assistant Chief Michael Smith in the categories of productivity and loss prevention for his work to help make significant upgrades to our LFR staffing program. Captain Truba's efforts have resulted in a more modern and efficient automated staffing program for LFR. And automated staffing is essential for LFR to schedule various types of employee leave, such as special assignments or continuing education, vacation, injury, and illness leaves, while still ensuring appropriate staff are in place to deliver a robust public safety response for our community members. Captain Truba played an instrumental role in LFR's adoption and upgrade to a fully automated staffing system. He assisted in the review of several different companies that specialize in automated staffing. He even traveled to visit one company on site. Captain Truba's careful review and input ultimately helped LFR select its current system, one that has already saved the department a significant amount of money and increased its efficiency. In his nomination letter of Captain Truba, Assistant Fire Chief Smith wrote, quote, "In summary, the upgrade and transition to a more automated system would not be possible without Captain Truba's assistance, his attention to detail, knowledge of LFR staffing needs, and willingness to put in the extra effort has and will continue to pay dividends for all members of LFR." So will you all please join me in congratulating Captain Ron Truba for his commitment and professional work on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue. I'd now like to call up Assistant Fire Chief Michael Smith to say a few words.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Good afternoon, everybody. To say that, when we first started this venture, we didn't realize it was going to take us over a year, but thanks to Captain Truba's dedication both on and off the job, we were able to get us to where we want to be and help the citizens of Lincoln and more efficient for LFR. So thanks to his dedication, we're getting where we want to be. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Would you like to say a few words?
Good afternoon, members of the council. I would like to say thank you for the recognition and to Chief Smith for nominating me for the award. I am very appreciative of it. I, however, am not the only one who has been a part of this. There are a lot of people who have worked on it, including Chief Smith himself, and I would say it wouldn't have been possible without him. He has been the driving force to bring labor and management together and find efficiencies. And there's a lot more work to be done, so we'll get there, but I am appreciative of the work that we've done so far. Thank you.
Does she have any family here today that you would acknowledge?
Yes, my family is sitting back here.
We're very grateful to all of you for supporting his work. We know it's a big sacrifice on the part of our families who support all of our LFR teammates and Captain's work, so. Did any of you want to say anything about Captain Truba by any chance? This is your chance. Boy, do we. Always calling Captain Trouble. No, congratulations and best wishes. And thank you for your work. Councilwoman Washington.
Captain, thank you. I know what you've done is a lot of work behind the scenes, and you don't often, people don't often get the recognition for administrative work. Thank you, because they're not the, it's not the most exciting work, but it is really necessary, and it gives us the underpinnings we need to make certain that people are being treated correctly and right, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is it easier to schedule a vacation now? Is that?
It is.
Okay, very good, very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Anyone else on the council? Councilman Bowers?
You're awesome. Thanks so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Councilman Cho. Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's congratulate him one more time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mayor. And when you are ready, Madam Clerk, we can move on.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Include Sections 1 and Sections 2.
Anyone present to speak on any of these items in Section 1 or in Section 2? Please come forward. I'm sorry? Any item in Item Section 1 or Section 2? Well, that's okay.
What do you hear to speak on today, sir? Sorry.
No, you're fine.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. Is there an item you wanted to speak on, sir, that falls under Item 1 or Item 2? Okay, it'll be, it'll be coming up then. All right. Anyone else present that would like to speak on any item under Section 1 or Section 2? All right. We can move on.
Okay. We can now vote on these items. I'll be calling Item 1A, Approving a Professional Service Agreement Supplement Number 1 for Preliminary Engineering Services between the City of Lincoln and Schimmer Associates, Inc., for the North First Street and Cornosker Highway Intersection Improvement Project, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 1B is approving the Professional Service Agreement Supplement Number 2 for Environmental Services between the City of Lincoln and Felsburg-Holt in Uleving for the Lincoln Beale Slough Trail Project, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 2A was introduced by Cho.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. That concludes our Consent Agenda, Sections 1 and 2. We shall now move on to Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll be calling Item 4A, Application of Warhorse Gaming Lincoln, LLC Doing Business as Warhorse Casino Lincoln for the addition of a catering license to their Class I liquor license at 7055 South First Street.
Welcome.
Thanks for having us. My name is Walter Coffey. I'm the Vice President of Hospitality.
Would you mind taking a microphone, please? Thank you.
I'm Walter Coffey, Vice President of Hospitality for Warhorse. We are excited to continue our growth in the community and provide opportunities. As such, we're asking for a catering license extension to our original liquor license so that we can do more events for the horsemen, including their Derby Events and Live Racing.
Great, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Troy Volk, I'm Vice President, or he's Vice President, Food and Beverage Manager.
Did you get promoted? Yeah. That's okay. Thank you both for being here. Are there questions for our applicants?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you for being here. We'll vote at the end of the session.
Or do you grow?
Yes. Okay. Anyone else present to testify on Item 5A? Item 5A, anyone else? All right. Saying none, Mr. Councilman Cho, you are 5A.
Oh, I thought you were concluding that item.
Would you like to testify on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
4A.
I'm sorry, 4A. I beg your pardon, 4A. I'm sorry, sir. Anyone else on 4A? Yes, Councilman Cho.
Seeing no one else coming forward to talk about Item 4A, I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
Now we can move to 5A. Thank you, sirs.
Next up is Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. I'll be calling Item 5A, Accepting and Approving the Report of New Impending Claims Against the City for January 16 through January 31, 2023.
Anyone present to testify on Item 5A?
I have to sign a claim.
Okay.
I have a claim for items that weren't returned to me by the Mental Health Crisis Center in Lancaster County.
Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Stephen Vernon Garwood, 2445 R. Street, Tennessee, Lakeview, Nebraska, 68503.
And tell us again what your situation is, sir?
I was, uh, what's the word? Abscounded with, by the police at a scene where my sister needed an ambulance, and I spent a year and a half in treatment for schizophrenia. As a known schizophrenic, to the courts, to the law officers, they are watching out. Officer Hudek wanted to fight immediately. I, I have a terrible reputation. No one asked me to get on the ground when I first got to the crisis center. It took 13 backup to get me on the ground, and I finally lied there. But it took 10 minutes till they punctured my kidney with an injection, and I had my very valuable ring. It is very beautiful. It has gold in the middle and silver, like, on the outsides, and teardrops. This ring is now in the, well, the crisis center had it, but now they say on the phone that they don't have it. I also have had a 1-centimeter-by-centimeter pointed diamond, princess-cut diamond, that was taken from me at the crisis center. It's not on any inventory list. There are witnesses that have spoken in front of the law enforcement, sheriffs, deputies, several times about the diamond and my 50-pocket-per-side, per-leg Cherokee workwear pants that only I qualified for. They have written on it, and those are mine. They, they told me it was in the laundry last time I was there. I was in seclusion for six weeks without knowing any reason, or three weeks this time. I've probably spent six months in seclusion for Dr. Roy, or Doc Roy. I have a diagnosis that's been diagnosed in one meeting with one doctor where I remain silent, and I've lived it up ever since on the government dime that I'm very grateful for. And I have various injuries that are tragic that I've lived through, including the poisoning of my body for several doctors in town that have been reviewed and the list distributed by United Healthcare. My favorite part of any benefit that I've ever gotten was their cheering, my cordial calls that they say I'm the best part of United Healthcare. I have a lot of friends, I have a lot of fans around the world, I have 100 samples of my name being sung. I regularly get poisoned by the crew at the crisis center. I have survived. My sister and my father have witnessed me in the morgue, according to them, and I have a vision of what my afterlife concluded with. And I made it back. I love life more than anything, anything. There is no comparison to being here. I am not a danger to myself or others. The police have EPC'd me six times. One, the officer Travis Amon tackled me twice. I stood up twice. He rough-cuffed me, and this was all in response to a WMD that I found in my garage. I had asked dispatch. I think I know how old the bomb in my garage is, and they sent the bomb squad again. I lost my house. The Dr. Schaub had removed the right to live in a house that I had, and I was at the Regional Center for three months. I got out instantly. I am Steve Garwood of the Regional Center, I know that, but I am Steve Garwood of Parlet. I represent several deities. I represent God, Christianity, and Satanism, and Luciferianism.
One minute.
I have several talents that are not exposed at the moment. I have never told anybody of my psychic ability, and I have credentials for it that I don't want to expose. And I don't like getting taken to the crisis center and losing my respect and everything for the last, the next year and a half of my life at the whim of a, snap of a finger of a cop. And I don't like that policy that they can diagnose anybody. They can diagnose anybody, and within a minute, they're a danger to themselves or others. You are in the system, and it is the single point of entry, and it is the final point of entry. And you go to a old house, or old homeless shelter, and then on to Louisville, Kentucky, if you're homeless here. You absolutely have no, you have no recourse when the police take you there, and then you are the single point, final point of entry. Thank you.
Okay, sir, if you could remain at the podium just a little bit longer, just in case we have questions. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the council or any comments? Councilman Bowers?
Hi. Thanks so much for coming out and sharing your story.
Sure.
I just was hoping to provide a little bit of information, as I understand it. If you got taken to the Mental Health Crisis Center, that's ran by the county, not the city, and so if you're seeking to be made whole, the county would be the appropriate place to go. And the Mental Health Crisis Center actually has an advisory board also, and I can write down, one of the county commissioners is on that advisory board, and I'd be more than happy to write down that commissioner's name and...
I appreciate that. I sent a form to various places, and they responded by sending here.
Yeah, so I think that, I mean, I don't want to speak for my colleagues here, but is your claim the one in the amount of $20 million?
Well, that was from my fingertip. I have a contract coming up for playing guitar.
Okay.
I, I literally have priceless and irreplaceable items that have been stolen by the crisis center. I didn't have any recourse but to have the police put me there, and then a sheriff took me away. But there is a provision in, let's see, the Political Subdivision Claims Act that this act specifically excludes from its provision any claim arising in respect to the detention of goods or merchandise by any law enforcement officer. I'm just going to state that.
I'll be more than, I'll write down the contact information for you, and I'll make sure that you get it so that way you know which county board member to get a hold of, since, in my opinion, I think that'd be the appropriate venue, since the county runs the Mental Health Crisis Center.
Okay.
Councilman Beckyus? Thank you, Councilman Bowers.
Yes, I just wanted, thank you for coming down and testifying today.
Appreciate that.
If, if Councilman Bowers would maybe like to take a few moments to talk with you, I think that would be, that would be good, and then we can either, I would suggest either let that happen, if Councilman Bowers would like to, or maybe take a short break.
Okay.
What's the will of the council? Are there other questions first before we?
I don't have another question. I think all of my questions have been answered because I was curious about city or county. I'm glad, Councilman Bowers, that you clarified that that's a county, a county thing, and if we need to take a minute, that would be fine, but I'd like to keep the agenda moving if possible.
It's county, district, of course. Is that?
Okay. Yep. So I think what we can do is if Councilman Bowers could hand the information to our clerk and pass it off to you, and I don't know how long you can stay today, but we will be voting on this item, on your claim of $20 million. But in the meantime, Councilman Bowers has some information for you that our clerk will pass to you.
Blessed be, thank you.
Yes, of course, and thank you, Councilman Bowers, and that way we can keep the agenda moving. Thank you, Councilman Beckyus and Councilwoman Washington, and we appreciate your being here, sir. Thank you very much. Anyone else here present to testify on Item 5A? Anyone else, 5A? All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you move us on, please?
Okay, we can now vote on this item. Item 5A is accepting and approving...
Not the, oh, that we do. I'm sorry. We have a motion to amend, and I would like to recognize, I beg your pardon, Madam Clerk, Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you very much. I just wasn't speaking fast enough, but I do have a motion to amend, number one, on this item to correct, to update the claims report. There was another claim accepted, and I just wanted to make certain that that is on the record.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion to remove this from the denied claims list. Yes, second.
Thank you, Councilman Cho. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I, I will just read the Item 5A to the record first, and then I will call a roll on the motion to amend.
Thank you.
Okay. Accepting and approving the Report of New Impending Claims Against the City for January 16 through January 31, 2023, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington.
Okay. And we had a motion to amend that was moved by Washington, seconded by Cho, and I'll call the roll now.
Thank you.
Yep. Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
Thank you. All right.
And we have the main motion.
Ready?
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. We can move on. I'm, yes, sir.
I don't want to read without knowing what happened, sir.
So, correct. Mr. Christie, do you want to explain? We'll have our city attorney explain, all the legalese. Thank you. All right. Okay. Madam Clerk, I think we can move on.
Okay. I'll be calling items in Section 6, Public Hearing Ordinance's Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Items 6A and 6B will be called together. Change of Zone 22039, Application of IMS Properties LLC to change from R2 Residential District to I1 Industrial District to H3 Highway Commercial District, PUD. Plan Mutant Development on Property Generally Located at 1100 Southwest 6th Street, and the related First Amendment to Conservation Easement between the City and IMS Properties, LLC to adjust the boundaries of the East Mint area on the property generally located at 1100 Southwest 6th Street.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105, appearing today on behalf of IMS Properties, and the principal of that company is here with me today too, Nick Cusick, in the audience. See if we can get our map to come up here. The applications, we have two items here before you today, and they involve property located at about Southwest 6th Street and D, kind of between D and B. IMS Properties had a desire to expand. They have the one existing building on the property out there today, desire to expand and build a expansion onto it. This would allow them to move some of the uses they have from their facilities in downtown at about 603 L. Street out here and upgrade and potentially grow some of their services. The property, as you can see on the map, is zoned largely I1. There's a small amount of R2 zoning right along Southwest 6th Street, kind of got an odd shape, which we think maybe followed an old creek channel or something there. But what happened was when we laid the building out, unfortunately, we were clipping one little corner of the R2 Residential District, and given the proximity of the I1 to the residential, their sensitivity to that, planning, well, we visited with planning about changing the zone on that small portion of R to I1. Their preference, they asked us to consider changing the entire site to an H3 PUD. And so we looked through the uses and agreed to do that, and so the request before you today is for an H3 PUD on that entire area. So that's the map that's going to go along with our PUD. We have an area that's basically the west 100 feet of the property and then the east. And so under the PUD, we've amended some of the uses to allow the uses in the I1 that are important to us, manufacturing and the things that we need to do while eliminating some of the more harmful I1 uses, okay? And then the second part of the PUD was to put a restriction on that 100 feet that basically would restrict the manufacturer's storage or processing of extremely hazardous substances...
Okay, I'll be calling, uh, items in Section 6, Public Carrying Ordinances, Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Items 6A and 6B will be called together. Change of Zone 22039, Application of IMS Properties LLC to change from R2 Residential District to I1 Industrial District to H3 Highway Commercial District, PUD. Plan Unit Development on Property Generally Located at 1100 Southwest 6th Street. And the related First Amendment to Conservation Easement between the City and IMS Properties LLC to adjust the boundaries of the East, Eastment area on the property generally located at 1100 Southwest 6th Street.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105, appearing today on behalf of IMS Properties. And the principal of that company is here with me today too, Nick Cusick, in the audience. See if we can get our map to come up here. Uh, the applications, we have two items here before you today, uh, and they involve property located at about Southwest 6th Street and D, kind of between D and B. IMS Properties had a desire to expand. They have the one existing building on the property out there today. Desire to expand and build a expansion onto it. Uh, this would allow them to, um, move some of the uses they have from their facilities in downtown at about 603 L Street out here and upgrade and, and potentially grow some of their services. Um, the property, as you can see on the map, is zoned largely I1. There's a small amount of R2 zoning right along, uh, Southwest 6th Street. Kind of got an odd shape, which we think maybe followed an old creek channel or something there. Um, but, but what happened was when we laid the building out, unfortunately, we were clipping one little corner of the R2 Residential District. Um, and given the proximity of the I1 to the residential, their sensitivity to that, planning, uh, well, we visited with planning about, uh, changing the, the zone on that small portion of R to I1. Their preference, they asked us to consider changing the entire site to an H3 PUD. And so we looked through the uses and, and agreed to do that. And so the request before you today is for an H3 PUD on that entire area. So that's the map that's going to go along with our, our PUD. We have an area that's basically the west 100 feet of the property and then the east. And so under the PUD, we've amended, um, some of the uses to allow, uh, the uses in the I1 that are important to us, uh, manufacturing and, um, um, the things that we need to do while eliminating some of the more harmful I1 uses, okay? And then the second part of the PUD was to put a restriction, um, on that 100 feet that basically would restrict, um, the, the manufacture, storage or processing of extremely hazardous substances within that area. So what this H3 allows us to do is to, to basically provide a little bit more protection for the neighbors on the west side in the, um, that, that do have residential homes and give them a little more protection for that entire 100 feet, which extends a little bit wider than what the R2 did, but yet allows IMS, um, properties to build the building they need to out there. And so manufacturing, storage are the main uses that we need. Um, the new building, um, is going to be taking access to West B Street, so there's no additional conflicts or access points out to Southwest 6th Street. Um, as part of the, uh, construction, because of that access to, um, West B Street, we're going to clip the corner of a conservation easement. Back in 1999, there was a conservation easement that was, um, dedicated to the city on the southern portion of this property, and so there's one little area that that access point clips. So as part of our applications, we're asking for an amendment to that conservation easement. Uh, you can see on the map here, the little area that will be impacting would have had 63 cubic yards of flood storage volume. And the area that we're adding to the conservation easement will provide 263 cubic yards of flood storage. So, um, we're, we're going to grant some additional storage in the easement area for the ability to make our access point work there. Um, we did send a letter to all the neighbors out here. Uh, we had one email and that was a, a neighbor across the street who had some questions about what might be changing on Southwest 6th Street. And there isn't anything changing on Southwest 6th Street, no, no additional improvements, no access. And so she was, said thank you for answering the question. Other than that, uh, we were on consent agenda at Planning Commission, so approved as part of that, uh, consent agenda. But I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Ms. Kalkowski? Comments?
Just...
Yes, Ms. Councilman Beckius.
Just one comment for you and your, your client. Thank you, uh, for, um, being willing to restrict some uses there. Um, I think when we are considering expansion, um, in neighborhoods that are budding residential neighborhoods, a restriction of uses like that really makes it feasible for the continued, the continued use of the business, the expansion of the business, while also, um, taking into consideration that there is a, a neighborhood just across the street. So, thank you for that. Very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Washington.
And I, I'm not going to echo everything that, uh, Councilman Beckius has said, though. I'm in agreement. I just want to, I, I noticed immediately the, uh, flood storage, uh, and the conservation easement when I was reading through the packet, and I really appreciate going, uh, increasing the flood storage that we have on the site, and thank you for doing so.
You're welcome.
For making those arrangements.
All right, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else present to testify on this item? Mr. Ewing?
I'm Gary Ervin. I live at 645 D Street. Uh, I wrote this before I found out that they were actually going to build on this, so, um, it's a short synopsis of what I've got. Uh, one thing I was just now, they were talking about the 100-foot. My drawback on that is the 100-foot, how about South Salt Creek on the other side? What do we do when we get chemicals into it? Uh, I, it seems like we're back to the same thing we were a month ago or so with the foot incline. I don't see any no-net rise. Because of the storage, I don't think it's enough. I think if we had another rain like we did in 15, this would not even contain it. So, I don't know, the retention pond, as far as I'm concerned, isn't big enough. Um, I really, it, it gets to the point that South Salt Creek keeps getting encroached more and more and more. And we've got people sitting right on top of it, and some of them don't have a choice, especially the people on the east side that are down towards K Street and there. Because they are sitting right there, they've been there for years, and yet they're the first ones to get flooded. And yet these people build right there and they're expecting us to protect them. I don't think that's right. So I'm, I just don't understand why everybody keeps trying to build right on top of Salt Creek. Uh, I don't know if anybody has read the Olson Study? That was the one that kept coming up a month and a half ago. I finally got a hold of it and I started looking at it. And I saw two places, one in Omaha, one in Beatrice. The Beatrice one, they, they bought out everybody next to the river. Omaha is having the same issues that we're having right now with people getting flooded, and yet they're having to buy out on both sides of it. And they're paying a pretty price for it. I'm just hoping that this city will not have to pay that price, but, uh, the study went back only back to 2000. Uh, I lived in the house that I'm in for over 50 years, and I've seen more than just these, this flood in 15. I've seen floods back in the 19s. I think 88 or someplace in there, I couldn't go back and find out. But there's been several floods besides the one in 15. And I really think that we need to be careful of what we do next to the creek. And it just scares me with these people building right on the edge of the creek. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ervin. Any questions? Comments?
I am a member of the South Salt Creek Association, so I know a little bit, and I've been to a lot of the PIMO meetings and stuff, so I have talked to them a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, anyone else present to testify on this item? Anyone else? Would you like to close, Ms. Kalkowski?
I think, I guess, just a couple of comments. Um, when this property was graded, back when the original building was placed there, most of the fill was placed for the existing building. So the pad is really already there. We will be, you know, complying with the city's requirements on the amount of fill in the floodplain for this area. And obviously, the building will have to comply with, with whatever the building permit requirements are the time when we submit the building permit. So, um, moving forward, meeting all of the city's regulations with respect to the area.
Thank you for that. Are there any further questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Uh, Ms. Kalkowski, Mr. Ervin mentioned a retention pond and I did not see...
I think that's the conservation easement area.
Thank you. I, I'm looking for the retention pond and couldn't find it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, thank you very much. All right, anyone else? I guess we're done with this item. Madam Clerk, can we please move on?
Yep. We can, uh, conclude this Section 6 and move on to Section 7, Ordnances Third Relating and Related Resolutions. Item 7A is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefix by the letter A by creating the classification of registered dietitian 2, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7B is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefix by the letter A by changing the title from registered dietitian to registered dietitian 1, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7C is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefix by the letter E by changing the title from human resources specialist to senior human resources specialist, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7D is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefix by the letter W by changing the title from human resources operation manager to human resources service center manager, claims and insurance coordinator to claims and insurance administrator, and safety and training coordinator to safety program administrator, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7E is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefix by the letter E by changing the title from human resources generalist to human resources specialist, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7F is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefix by X by changing the pay range class 0612, human resources clerk to human resources representative from X11 to E05, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7G. Approving the construction and ground lease and operating agreement between the city of Lincoln, Nebraska and Lincoln Youth Complex for the Lincoln Youth Complex Sports Field for a term of 35 years, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Shob. Further discussion? Councilman Beckius?
The Lincoln Youth Complex will be a great addition to the city of Lincoln, and I am looking forward to its construction in due time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Discussion? All right, seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0. Item 7H is approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska to contribute funds for the Lincoln Youth Complex ballfields on property generally located at 2100, excuse me, 2100 North 1st Street, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Shob. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0. Item 7I. Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22006, Application of White Holdings LLC to amend the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to amend the future land use plan from urban residential to urban residential and commercial on the property generally located at North 112th and O Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7J is annexation 22013, Application of White Holdings LLC to annex approximately 14.68 acres, more or less on the property generally located at North 112th and O Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7K is approving the conditional annexation and change of zone agreement between the city of Lincoln, Fund 51 LLC and White Holdings LLC for the annexation and development of the property generally located at the northwest corner of North 112th Street and O Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7L, Change of Zone 22036, Application of White Holdings LLC to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at North 112th and O Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. That concludes our Section 7. Section 8 is Resolutions First Readings, Items 8A through 8C. Section 9, Ordnances First Reading and Related Resolutions, Item 9A. And Section 10, Pending List, Items 10A through 10C.
This evening, this afternoon is, um, public comment period. This is a time where you, anyone present may comment on an item that's not, um, does not appear on this agenda or, uh, on a future agenda. You have five minutes to address the city council. Is there anyone here that would like to do so? Please come forward. I see that our, our city clerk has a list of testifiers to come forward. So, Madam Clerk, would you like to call the first person to come forward?
I'll be calling Emily Levine. Next would be Rose Godinez? Goodness? Goodness.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
You might remember me from last spring. You made the wrong decision. Everyone except Councilwoman Washington. I think, I don't know if you remember at all how I talked about that for 50 years I've been walking in what's now called Wilderness Park. 50 years I've been actively standing up for indigenous civil and human rights. So those are two reasons I'm here. And the third reason I talked about when I testified in the spring, that, that, that piece of land that's currently being demolished is of great personal importance to me. I went back in preparation to speak, um, to look at some of the testimony last April and look at the history more. A mayor's statement, besides that she starts with that performative land acknowledgement stuff, um, that is copped from the university's performative land acknowledgement stuff. It's incorrect for the city of Lincoln, so someone might get on that and fix it. But her second sentence was, "We must honor with gratitude the land itself." It's been very hard for me to go out there anymore since they started ripping the trees out of the ground. I was out there Wednesday for a few hours by myself and then some other people came and gorgeous sunset. The tree rippers had left and just up the road, about seven or eight deer came out at Wilderness Park, crossed the road, went up that incline into Snell's old place. went up that incline into Snell's old place. And I thought about what they were going to see that day when they got to the top and looked, and every single tree around that homestead would be gone. Earlier that day when I was sitting there by myself and watching side dumper after side dumper after side dumper come out with the carcasses of our trees, there was a hawk came and sat, stood on the very top of the telescoping light thing that they rigged up out there, surveying things. I think maybe y'all made a decision that you don't know enough about to have made. It's hard enough for me to come here and speak, and really hard for me to look people in the eye and say, "You voted wrong." It can't be put back, it will never come back. Instead, there's going to be really, really damaging housing. I think I might have written to you about how when all these homeowners spray their broadleaf weeds in the spring at the wrong time, that two-four D and dicamba that they spray volatilizes. It doesn't just water droplet drift, it is in the air, that's what volatilization is. And spraying is done at the exact time all those burrows in the park are going to be leafing out. For years now, we've seen those sensitive new leaves get damaged by two-four D and dicamba spraying. So, and then it springs to come, come out to the porch, or come out to the park and look at the oak leaves. Thinking about those deer and what they saw, thinking about that hawk.
One minute.
Looking over the land, I was reminded of a line from Emily St. John Mandel's recent award-winning book, Station Eleven. "I stood looking over my damaged home and tried to forget the sweetness of life on earth." Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Levine. Any questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please. Actually, Madam Clerk, does there, do you want to call someone on deck?
Uh, yes, actually, just an explanation for those that may have just come into the chambers or those that are out in the lobby. We do have a sign-in sheet for public testimony. I'll be calling names through my list, and there's also a contact table up front. So if you have not signed in yet to testify, please sign in at the front, and we will call names accordingly. Next up here is Rose Godinez?
Goodiness.
Goodiness, thank you. And next up would be Fran Kay. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Rose Goodiness. I am Senior Legal and Policy Counsel with the ACLU of Nebraska. The ACLU supports and defends the rights of all Native American peoples to retain their culture and religious traditions and practices. And this religious freedom is tied to the protection of the land. There is no religious freedom if the foundation for the practice of the religion in question interferes with that practice, which leads me to the reason I am here today. As you all know, the ACLU of Nebraska and Big Fire Law and Policy represent the Indian Center and individual members of the Niskiit prayer camp, Kevin Aberask, Renee Sansucci, and Erin Poor. And we filed an appeal on their behalf before the Board of Zoning Appeals opposing plans for the wilderness crossing, a housing development next to a large natural park and sacred ceremonial grounds. However, before we could even get a hearing, you, the City of Lincoln, filed a lawsuit against our clients for merely filing an appeal. You filed a lawsuit alleging the City of Board of Zoning Appeals did not have jurisdiction to hear our appeal despite your ordinances saying otherwise. You filed a lawsuit against your constituents, historically marginalized Native Americans, instead of granting them a hearing. You filed a lawsuit against a group of individuals whose ancestors are survivors of genocide, land displacement, and overall erasure when they are again stating, "We are still here." We filed a motion to dismiss your lawsuit, and the judge granted it on Wednesday, February first. We gave the city the benefit of the doubt, thinking we would have a hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals, scheduled soon, but that didn't happen because in less than forty-eight hours, on Friday, February third, at four-thirty-one PM, I was informed by email by the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department Director, David R. Carey, that he had concluded we did not, he did not have jurisdiction to hear the appeal. During the weekend, our clients observed bulldozers and other construction equipment on the land, the land of their ancestors' home, the land they continue to hold sacred, adjacent to the fish farm sweat lodges. And on Monday, that equipment moved with the intent of continuing construction, beginning with the trees on Snell Hill, despite advocates' requests to build around it and respect the trees and the relationship they have with those trees, which have a critical role in their ceremony, putting prayers and sacred objects on these hills' trees. Later that day, advocates observed their prayer ties in a heap on the ground before the fallen trees. I invite the mayor and council members, city attorney, to learn from the Lincoln Native community what these sacred grounds mean to them. I invite you to humble yourselves to the original landowners and of the land that we now call Nebraska, and confront and dismantle the legacies of colonialism. You hold the fate of the fish farm sweat lodges and connected land in your hands. You hold the power to decide if the historic fish farm's purpose is destroyed or protected for future generations. We respectfully request you to stop further erasure of Native American history and stand in solidarity with Lincoln's Native American community. You may be asking, "How can you do that?" Reverse your earlier approvals of the wilderness crossing project, hold a hearing, and truly listen to your Native American community leaders. Listen to their religious, historical, cultural, and environmental concerns, which are not only legitimate, but also demonstrate how your past approvals of this project violated your Lincoln Lancaster County twenty-fifty comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, next testifier, please.
Next is Fran Kay. Up next, after Ms. Kay, is John Peters. And there is two microphones, so if those are wanting to testify, please move forward. There's open seats up front, and we can, uh, respect everyone's time at the, for public comment.
And Madam Clerk, could you please repeat the name of the next person on deck?
Uh, next up after Ms. Fran Kay is John Peters.
Okay, John, could you come on up, please, and get signed in? Thank you. And would you please sign in, ma'am, when you have a moment? And we'll keep.
I have your information already.
Okay, oh, that's right, thank you, I forgot. Thank you.
These are symbolic, we feel we have been silenced, but thank you for hearing us this afternoon. My name is Fran Kay, and I'm here to support the Niskiit prayer camp. In the five-hundred-plus years since Europeans made sustained contact with this continent, more than ninety percent of the land has been stripped from native control. Indigenous populations have declined by more than ninety percent, and more than ninety percent of the megafauna and trees are gone. And yet indigenous people are still here. Conflict between developers and indigenous people could be resolved in many ways. If, for instance, a religious diocese owned land of cultural significance to local indigenous people, they could give the land back to the people, acknowledging their own past failures and promising to avoid future mistakes. That would be decolonization. Or a city council could follow its own procedures and broker a meaningful compromise between a developer and indigenous and allied community groups seeking protection for a significant site that is supposed to be protected according to the comprehensive plan. That is reconciliation. Or a developer could rush through its plans with little warning and no contact or consultation with the impacted indigenous community, allow only cosmetic changes in its plans, and show up at sunrise to bash trees and bulldoze sensitive terrain despite a court win by indigenous groups and allies. That is neo-colonialism, a modern version of the Trail of Tears. We are here today, as we have been before, to ask you to listen to indigenous people and their allies, slow down the environmental destruction, and require small but key changes in the development plans to protect us. We realize that Manzito Construction may have title to this land fair and square according to the laws. We also realize that all North American landlords come from two bases, to extinguish native title and to take control from people who use the group, the land as a community and give it to private individuals for private profit. We ask that you consider what that means. Thank you.
Thank you very much, excuse me, thank you. Questions? All right, next testifier, please.
Up next is John Peters, on deck would be Christina Bratner.
Hi, my name is John Peters, and I stand in solidarity with the Niskiit prayer camp, and I will just stand here in silence as you have done to silence native voices.
Thank you, next testifier please.
Christina Brandner, on deck would be Wyatt Nelson.
Hi, my name is Christina Brandner. I am part of a group of activist academic allies for Niskiithe prayer camp. And we're more than 100 academics and I would like to speak for that group. And I know some of you personally. And I hope, as my previous speaker friends have pointed out more eloquently than I can, that you can think about the impact of your actions from last spring, of doing the rezoning and what you can do now to help the developer Manzito realize how important it is to meaningfully change some of the design of his development. It will happen, I guess we can't put the train back into the depot. But you're powerful people and you shouldn't be hiding behind your pencils. And in this chamber, you represent all of us. And as a foreign-born person, I'm of German descent, I know what it means when a people tries to erase another people. And although that was after, I was born after that happened, there is a responsibility that younger Germans carry for the almost erasure of Jewish people in Europe. And I would think that my fellow Americans could maybe be inspired by a thing or two as Germans have been trying to remember what they did wrong and keep educating people so it would not happen again. And I think this type of confronting once past, the colonial past that has happened, we can't undo. But what you all can definitely do is step outside that track and stop the continuation. And that is what I would like to ask of you. Think about it, you have a role in it, you have a responsibility in it, all of you. And I implore you to use that for our Indigenous relatives. Thank you.
Thank you, next testifier please.
Wyatt Nelson is next, on deck would be David Merritt.
Good afternoon, my name's Wyatt Nelson. On my mom's side, family names are Scala and Male and Ortmeier and Spener. And my great-great-grandmother came from Poland and my other grandmothers lived in Germany. And on my dad's side, my family names are Troxel and Grim and Cowell and Hill. And they came from Germany and Ireland and... I'm here today speaking on their behalf. You have effectively silenced the voices of your community with legal action and with the police. So I'm gonna take this time to reflect that silence.
Do you have one minute?
Amen.
Thank you, next testifier please.
Next up, I have David Merritt, on deck would be Anastasia Finesse.
Thanks everybody. My name is David Merritt. I'm a 51-year-old Caucasian male from Lincoln. When I was a little boy, we would have these neat modules, maybe from a school system that hadn't yet been so cut. And they would show, they would take us out to Wilderness Park and, you know, show us things like this, this is a box elder bug. These things are Indigenous to, to your home. And aside from the, aside from the urban development completely, undeniably silencing the sacred Native lands, I find unforgivable. And there's just no reason to do that except for money. And I suspect that the development, given the topography of the land, it won't do well anyway due to just, just straight runoff. I mean, I'm not even a, I don't have PhDs and I know enough to know that you can't pave that or it's gonna flood out and it's gonna flood out year after year and then you're gonna have people upset. And then, you know, you're, we're all gonna realize down the road that it never should've happened in the first place. So I'll just very sadly and with many tears in my eyes and with many thanks to the council, just observe silence in honor of the, of the Native nations. Thank you.
Do you have one minute?
Thank you, next testifier please.
Anastasia, how do you pronounce your last name?
Finner.
Finner, thank you. Anastasia Finner, up next would be Chelsea West.
My name is Anastasia Finner and I'm here to stand in solidarity with the Niskiithe prayer camp and the city of Lincoln. The city council and the mayorship has on purpose silenced Indigenous voices. So I am here to reflect that silence upon you.
Thank you, next testifier please.
Next up is Chelsea West, on deck is Dylan Lenowski.
I would like to use this time to ask my elder to come and speak before me. I will speak after my elder.
Oh, right here ma'am, right on this microphone, right here. Please state your name.
My name is Maria Forchun and I apologize for my shortcomings today. As I came here, I'm not expecting to speak this afternoon. But, so I must speak from my heart. I've been following Niskiithe prayer camp since its inception, when everything started. And I know of the sweat lodge, I've been there myself several years ago. And I know that it's been there for anyone willing to take on those ways of life. And it's helped people, it's helped heal people. Right now, this world is coming to some drastic measures and, you know, it doesn't help that we are losing more of our traditional ways, our medicines. And that sweat lodge was placed there some time ago for healing purposes. And we just got our rights back not too long ago, you know? I'm, now I'm at 60, I'll be 61 this month. But I've seen the damage done to my ancestors. And by building this complex there, you're taking away a lot of our, our ways. And, you know, to go about this the way you did and not listen to the people. We natives, we've been here a long time. You know, we've been here, that was our, we walked, our ancestors walked the Trail of Tears crossing that land. And here we are today, looking at the shameful Manzito, how they went about this. You know, there's plenty of land to build housing complexes on. I've been around Lincoln, I was born and raised here. And we keep, I mean, there's plenty, I saw, just driving out to Air Park, Manzito's out there. That's a good spot, those people needed that. Those people have needed that for some time, you know? There's plenty of places to expand and develop. But I think where they put it here is not the right place. And I'm listening to others speak here today. Warning, you know, you cut down that hill. That hill was sacred land. We watched our ancestors, the trees, the grass, you know? Everything is gone. That took time to build that and to make that a sacred spot. It has always been that way. And, you know, here we are, we are small, humble people, as Native people are. And we just wanna be heard, you know? We, we want our ways back, you know? But we have been colonized and, you know, we're just trying to survive here as always. That's the way the natives have been, is always on survival mode. And this breaks my heart. I sat out there and I watched those bulldozers and I watched these young brave men go up and try to fight the machine. Here we are, you know? Standing here, trying to fight city council and the, and the Manzito brothers. You know, there should've been some, some type of conversations, you know? We have hundreds of churches in Lincoln, Nebraska, you know? And yet, we have to target the Native areas. And I, I, I'm just appalled. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and silence myself as usual.
Do you have one minute?
Thank you, next testifier please.
Chelsea West, on deck would be Dylan Lenowski.
My name is Chelsea West. My blood is of Sichangu Oyate. And I am proud to stand here and take a stand here today, much like I have been proud to take a stand out on that hill with my relatives and on that road with our allies. And I hope that standing here, this silence makes you uncomfortable. And I hope that when you look me in the eyes, you are looking at my ancestors and all of our future generations. And I hope this has an impact on you like it has had on all of us. And as a member of the Indigenous community, as a member of a recovery community here, I know that that sweat lodge saves lives. And this week, we witnessed our relatives bulldozed, trampled, killed. The land was raped by bulldozers. I watched my relatives be arrested. And there's a lot of trauma to heal from, from that. But I know that we are proud to be standing up for what we believe in and what is right. And I know that taking a stand for this land isn't just beneficial to Indigenous peoples, it's beneficial to you. We only have one home. So again, I hope this silence makes you uncomfortable. And I hope you can look me in the eyes, look at my ancestors and the future generations, because we're still here.
You have one minute.
Thank you, next testifier please.
My name is Dylan Lenowski. I'm of European descent. Smalljohn, Schwadiver, Vaskoviac, and Lenowski. I'm here to speak in solidarity with my native relatives, from this country, from this land. I'm here to stand in solidarity and in mourning, for what has been lost this week, what has been lost the last nine months. A rape has occurred. A rape of our mother. Our mother, all of us, all of our relations. We can't, we can't do this. We can't sustain this. Our society is hurting, because we keep doing this same thing.
One minute.
Thank you, next testifier please. Anyone else care to testify?
There is, I'm waiting for a list. Next up is Erin Kay, on deck would be Mona Yuses.
Hi, I'm here today in solidarity with Niskiit Day Prayer Camp, and how they've been silenced, and, yep.
One minute.
Thank you, next testifier please.
Mooney Yuses, Mooney, I'm sorry.
Mooney Yuses, 3340 South 31st, Wilderness Park is my church. This development is bad for Wilderness Park, it's bad for the Indigenous community, and it's bad for the city of Lincoln, because it showcases greed and power over the natural world and community. I stand in solidarity.
One minute.
Thank you, Mooney, next testifier please.
Rosina Paulini, on deck would be Toni Malard.
I am Rosina Paulini, I live at 1850 Dakota Street. This may be the most somber you ever see me, that's rare. We're gonna talk about the process. Last two weeks ago, I was in here, and we were talking about the Knolls development. There was actually more attention paid to the buffers, between the really, really rich people, and the rich people, than there were in the Wilderness Crossing. Development with appropriate buffers, with smart growth concepts that are in our 2040 plan. We pick and choose what parts of the plan we want to implement, does it get in the way of the developers? So this process is now happening, it's called master plans, with parks and wrecks. We have kind of a top-down thing going on there, too. We have Van Dorn Park master plan, we have other master plans. So you know me, I do a lot of community outreach. I go to a snack program over at Northeast High School. They have no idea there's a master plan going on for Lincoln Parks and Recs regarding mountain bikes. They kind of would really like to see something that's for all the people and how can we be inclusive? And how can we really understand what the people, the residents, would like to see in their parks? Or see in their developments? We had an opportunity with Wilderness Crossing to make it a showcase if you were going to build there. But you know what I said here? Don't build. You could have had the cap. You could, it's already expensive development, right? Let's not get real about what is affordable housing. $1,800 a month for an apartment with no transportation is not affordable housing for anybody. So let's just be clear that it wasn't affordable housing. So we could have made it a lovely development with lots of green space and actually made it an improvement. But what you have is really dense housing in an area that doesn't call for it. Except this little update in the master plan that I didn't look at. Darn. I'm paying attention now. Okay? Because of the process. And remember, people like Susan Foster Collins that's out there, Moni, we've been doing this for decades, right? So we've seen the climate change. I remember in the era when we had the mayor's environmental task force that put forth benchmarks, put forth policy. City council adopted the policy. It got implemented. This doesn't happen anymore. We have contracts with consultants. We forgot the people. Folks, this is happening nationally, internationally. We've got to get back to what did you want in your park today? Did you want a conservatory that's going to have 70,000 people when it's a regional entity in a neighborhood park? Did we even ask the people? We didn't. I'm still talking to people who have no idea of what's going on in a master plan in just that one park. I do grassroots outreach. We learn, we know.
One minute.
When we do grassroots outreach, there are lots of studies out there. The outcome is the best when you include the people. I lived at 26th and C Street for 15 years. Do you think I would have voted for an expansion of the zoo? My fire hydrant was blocked. My street was blocked. Good thing I ride a bike, right? There's no access on any of those events they occur. But look who lives south of there. They can't have a voice. They're working two jobs. They're trying to make ends meet. They have an open house somewhere over here from five to seven, they can never meet. They've got something that's a website that they don't even know about or know that it changed. So how do we get their voice? I know. We go to the bus stop. Remember when we needed a firehouse and they were going to remove it? Forgive me, I'm going to take another second. The people on 4th of July and 3rd of July lined up at BNR, Russ's out on Arnold Heights, and signed 1,300 signatures to say we want our firehouse here. Do not cut it. That voice got heard. That's grassroots outreach. You want to know what the people want? Go to the bus stations, go to the, I know, it takes time, doesn't it? But the outcome, the outcome is what the people want. Not what the developer want, not what special interests want, what a collaboration of people want. What questions do you have?
Questions for Rosina.
Do you understand where I'm coming from? Do you? I mean, I know you well enough to know how grassroots you've been, except for you, I'm sorry, I don't know you well. But I've followed you. We've got to get back to grassroots, guys. We've got to get back to the people. It's happening in all departments. I just gave you a couple of examples.
Thank you, Rosina.
I'm so very sad for all of us.
Next testifier please.
Up next is Tommy Menard? Or Tony Menard?
Tommy.
Tony Menard, are you still, is it Tony Menard? Alright.
Tommy.
Okay. Okay. That is all that I have so far signed up on my list. If there's anyone else here in the chambers or in the lobby that would like to testify, please come up to the podium and sign in at the sign-in sheet. Everyone's allowed five minutes for testimony with a one-minute reminder at the four-minute mark. Again, if there's anyone in the podium, or if there's anyone else here in the chambers that would like to come and testify, please come on up.
You have one minute.
We have nothing to lose but our chains.
Lou, thank you. Are there any more testifiers this evening on this issue? Anyone that has not testified that would like to? Okay, we do, we do have a city ordinance that does not permit signs in the city council chambers. But we appreciate seeing your solidarity. But we do have to ask you to not have the signs.
Want to take a break?
So. Yes?
Our city clerk has requested a break.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, just a moment please. Do. We do have a request for a break, so let's take a 10-minute break please and reconvene. And I am going to have to ask you to please take your signs back out in the lobby. We appreciate seeing them, but there is a city ordinance that prohibits them from being in the chambers. So it is my job to enforce that. So thank you. And we'll reconvene at 5:10. Thank you very much. So it is my job to enforce that. So thank you, and we'll reconvene at 5:10. Thank you very much. Anyone else present that would like to testify at public comment period? Is there anyone else left to testify that's present tonight? Yes, sorry, you had started. Please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you state your name again, please?
My name's Joshua Ray Smith. I'm from the land in the state of Wyoming. My, my, my great-grandfather, my ancestry is an Irish refugee that was indentured to the Union Pacific Railroad during the construction of the original Transcontinental Railroad. That brought my bloodline to Wyoming. And that railroad being a great example of, of this country's capitalistic empire. That in the extermination of indigenous peoples called development was one of the first examples of how development works. And that brought my, so my, my ancestry is to this land, to the land. I'm not from Lincoln. I'm not from Nebraska. I'm from that land in Wyoming, but I found home here in Lincoln. I found home in a community with these people of this community. These indigenous native people are my family, my relatives. And I, I pray every week at the sweat lodge known as the Fish Farm. I'm the firekeeper for an elder that offers ceremony there every, every Saturday. So I know, I know this place that you have chosen to destroy. It is my place of worship and, and my community. And I know that this isn't about land ownership. It's not an argument over who owns the land to do with what they please. And it's not up to you to decide who owns land. But it is in your hands to help us as a community decide what to do with land. In the same way that you don't determine who owns a vehicle. You do regulate how we operate our vehicles so that we flow together as a community. That's how and why zoning exists. Zoning helps the flow of how and who and what we do as a community in this society of Lincoln. In the same way that someone buying a big new home in South Lincoln with their great sod spread to raise a family trusts you and your zoning that their neighbor on the corner will not decide to profit from making their house into a bar and a strip club in this South Lincoln sprawl. They trust you. But the people less privileged, the native and indigenous peoples here, the people touching nature can't trust you with your zoning changes. You chose to swiftly vote, switch that zoning as directed as an arm of a well-planned machine called Manzito. It's such a clear example of, of big money, big businesses reach an arm through you.
One minute.
And in that way, and in that way that you chose Manzito's money for however it bought you without even listening to the voices, silencing them again and again, silencing them in your original vote, silencing them through a lawsuit against the Indian Center. And when, when the judicial system, our system told you that they, they, we all have a right to say something, to appeal, you silenced and dropped and refused that. Over and over again, these people are being silenced by what governs them, by what the wealthy trust and the less privileged have no trust. This act of silence after silence of intentional repeating silencing of these indigenous people is, is a continuation of the capitalistic empire's genocide of its indigenous peoples.
Time. Thank you very much. Any other testifiers? Two more, okay.
I do have two testifiers that signed up that I did not get a chance to read. I have F. Lou Brodts.
Oh, he did. Lou Brodts did, yes.
And Joshua Smith?
Just did.
Just did? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I did account for everyone that signed up. If there is anyone else that'd like to come up and testify, please come forward. We have two podiums and we also have two sign-in sheets, so please sign in. And we have five minutes of testimony. You'll have four minutes, and then the one-minute reminder will go off. You'll have one minute remaining after that. So please, if there is anyone else that would like to testify, please move forward and we can keep the testimony moving on.
And please state your name and address for the record, if you would.
My name is Caitlin, but now I'm going by Sage, so if you would please refer to me as that. My address is 1311 Washington Street here in Lincoln. I did not grow up in Lincoln. I grew up in Alabama. And I just would like to tell you a story of something that happened to the indigenous people of where I lived. In the early 2010s, some developers came through Oxford, Alabama, and they said, this hill, these hills look fantastic. We want to tear them down and place a Target and a Sam's Club there. And some of the archaeologists at my university, Jacksonville State University in Alabama, said, I don't think so. These are mounds. These are burial mounds full of indigenous artifacts, even bones of people who were buried there because they were burial mounds. Instead of abiding by what my professors said at the university, they hired a corrupt team to come out and they destroyed everything. And they burned the mounds down that included pieces of pottery, pieces of jewelry, and pieces of bone, pieces of people who had lived there, who created these mounds to honor their ancestors. And that's something that I see today as the erasure of these indigenous people on this land. There's nothing you can do in the future to try and fix your mistakes. Now we have a mound park that's right next to the Target, and it's just empty dirt that you can run up and down on. And it doesn't represent what it used to anymore because it's missing a lot of the history. It's missing a lot of the context. And this was all for a capitalistic gain, to build one of the worst Targets I've ever stepped foot in in my entire life and a Sam's Club up on this hill that used to hold history. I just wanted to remind you guys that you can tear as much as you want down, but you will never be able to fix what you have done, and you will never be able to fix the lives, the culture, and the history you have destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sage. Anyone else present that wants to testify on this issue? Please come forward.
Hello? Oh, I wanna, sorry. My name's Paul. I have been living in Lincoln for a few years now. I worked for a while as an Uber and Lyft driver. I actually drove one of you guys around once. Yeah, how you doing? And a lot of the times while driving really late at night, I would just get really depressed at all of the concrete everywhere. And it just kind of began really bothering me. And so I started retreating after I would drive, you know, to make money to Wilderness Park where I would just walk around and look for different forageable plants. When I heard that this situation arose within the city council, I was pretty upset, and I still am. I know a lot of people are. Because all of this concrete and development is just like, it's like a cancer. If you look at it from space, you know, it just keeps going and taking and taking. And it just is so ugly and disgusting. I can't wait to see, and I'm facetiously saying this, obviously. I can't wait to smell whatever awful smells come from the development. And I can't imagine what it's going to do to the soil levels around Wilderness Park for a lot of the native plants that a lot of people like to go there to enjoy. Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of disappointed, and I hope this gets resolved. And I hope you guys really, really consider what it is that this bill is proposing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next testifier.
Is there anybody else in front of me?
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Of course. Is this on? Hello?
Yes.
All right. Clint Densberger, president of Friends of Wilderness Park, 2735 Garfield, and here in Lincoln. There's, there's a lot going on, and I've contemplated so much these previous months. And I think, I think any cursory examination of American history would reveal some pretty big blind sides of our ancestors and some short-sightedness in their way of treatments of people that were not of the Caucasian race. And I think that goes without saying, and I think a lot has bubbled up to the surface on the national scene in these last decade and particularly the last few years that have helped to have us have a national conversation about what reckoning and reconciliation looks like. And I don't think it takes too much of a glance to look at how we treated our indigenous people. And I think if you look at what we have done here in Nebraska, the Pawnee, the Oto, the Ponca, Winnebago, the Omaha, these tribes were the friendly tribes. And as a result of being the friendly tribe, they were the first to be removed. They lost their homeland. And certainly we can look back and we can say, well, that wasn't us. That was our ancestors, and we didn't do anything to the Indians. And we can, we can look and try and point the finger at other people. But the reality is, what have we done to rectify the situation today in 2022 or 2023? What little parcel of land is the Lincoln, Nebraska, or Lancaster County, or the state of Nebraska said, hey, you know what? You guys lived here for hundreds of years. This is your land. We're gonna give you this 400-acre parcel right here along the river for you guys to come back and call your own, because it is your own. We're gonna give this back to you, and we're gonna pay you some reparations. What have we done with the Oto tribe? We gave them a certificate earlier this year. Okay, I'm sure they really appreciated the piece of paper and a little bit of PR that they got in the, in the paper. But what is it? Where do we have left? What are the remnants of artifacts, of sites, of, of pieces of what was really Nebraskan history? And one of the last remaining areas is right along the Salt Creek because that hasn't been developed. Because it was a flood zone, because it was unprofitable, right? And now the last remaining vestige, this, this little hilltop that sat at the northern endmost of the western side of the Salt Creek Trail that had been there for centuries, that had started out as a gaming trail. But if you had, say, Osage blood, and you were headed north to go and get salt in, say, 1725, you would have known that trail along Salt Creek that became Lincoln, Nebraska. And as you come across, coming north up through that trail, you would have been honored to be the one who was in charge of the hunt because that was always an honorable position. Because that meant you were in charge of helping your people survive for another two weeks. And one of the last remaining areas is right along the Salt Creek because that hasn't been developed. Because it was a flood zone, because it was unprofitable, right? And now the last remaining vestige, this, this little hilltop that sat at the northern endmost of the western side of the Salt Creek Trail that had been there for centuries, that had started out as a gaming trail. But if you had, say, Osage blood and you were headed north to go and get salt in, say, seventeen twenty-five, you would have known that trail along Salt Creek that became Lincoln, Nebraska. And as you come across, coming north up through that trail, you would have been honored to be the one who was in charge of the hunt because that was always an honorable position. Because that meant you were in charge of helping your people survive for another two weeks, another month, another two months. That was a very esteemable position because giving to others in a collective sense was sort of the antithesis to capitalism. But that was...
One minute.
That was what was important. And so there wouldn't have just been one generation of, of Osage or Ka or Pawnee or Oto that knew that trail and that also knew that when they got to the top of that hill right there, that that's where the Salt Creek and its meandering up north joined the Oak Creek and where the Antelope Creek came in from the southeast and where all of them coalesced into what was a swamp and a wetland and where there was large, vast expanses of salt pans that glowed in the sunlight. That was so sacred to be able to get salt. So sacred that they knew for weeks' travel away from here where and how to get here to get that salt. And they also knew that the wildlife that came to this area came here for the same reason. And they would assemble in vast herds of antelope and bison and elk. And so the hunt would begin on top of that hill with one person in charge who was able to look across the vast expanse that became Lincoln, Nebraska.
Time.
And decide how their tribe was gonna survive. And that hill happens to be next to a sacred lodge today, the last remnant of today's modern existing indigenous people. They deserve the dignity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Robert Reek. I live at one oh five North Eighth Street, apartment five oh eight, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five zero eight. Can any of you tell me what the state motto is? Nebraska's state motto? I mean, I'm, I'm literally asking you a question.
We, yes, typically we do not respond to testifiers.
Okay. All right, Nebraska's state motto, March first, nineteen sixty-seven, is equality before the law. So no matter how you lawfully justify this move, equality trumps this. You are our native land, we are our native land.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present that would like to testify? Please come forward. Please sign in and state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, it'll take me a second to write, I have a long Polish last name. My name's Olivia Chokolski and I live at eight thirty-seven Goodhue Boulevard. I'm gonna read something, I'm, uh, pretty nervous. Um, I'm a graduate student at UNL. And once a month, a group of us meet to discuss and learn more about issues impacting our community. And this month, timely, we were discussing, uh, the university is a land-grant university. Um, and my friend Haley, who's here, prepared a little something from an undergraduate student's honors thesis, which I'm gonna read. So it's written by someone named Jake Borgman. The University of Nebraska-Lincoln is a colonial institution, part of the federal land-grant university system established in the nineteenth century. There were fifty-two land-grant universities in the United States, including the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. Land-grant universities are universities that were given land by the federal government through the Moral Act of eighteen sixty-two. The land was not just for the purpose of having a place to build the university, but also to fund the university. Most of the land given to the land-grant universities was sold to private interests. In total, the Moral Act gave land-grant universities over ten point seven million acres of land. While federal officials described the land as free, they obtained it by taking it from indigenous nations during the United States genocidal expansionist campaign westward. The University of Nebraska-Lincoln was given eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty acres of Moral Act lands. And by nineteen fourteen, land sales had raised five hundred sixty thousand and seventy-two dollars. Today, according to the High Country News Land Grab Universities Database, UNL still owns six thousand one hundred seventy-three acres of land given to it by the Moral Act valued at four hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred eighteen dollars as of twenty nineteen. So I'm here because the university pays me to live here and research here. I think most of us have some connection to UNL in some way. And that university was funded by stolen, by the profits made by stolen land. And so, um, it seems like pretty unfair to me. Uh, and there's really no way to rectify that at this point. And you had an opportunity to do better than they did. And I'm extremely disappointed that was not the case. And so, um, unfortunately, it seems like we're not learning from our past mistakes. And I hope that moving forward, um, we think about the ways that we can do better by our indigenous and native peoples here in Nebraska. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Anyone else present that would like to testify? Please come forward. Anyone else?
My name is, uh, my name is Viola Burns. Officially it's Zachary Burns, but I go by Viola, I'm a trans woman. I would just like to, I, for one, wanna just commend the, uh, resolve of the indigenous people because throughout their constant silencing and the uphill struggle they face against the legal system, which refuses to acknowledge them. I, if I was in their position, I would have constant unrelenting anger towards what seems to be an apathy to the fact that you guys are just continuing the, uh, long-steady legacy in America of just honestly shitting on indigenous people. Like, our own founding fathers in the Declaration of Independence called the natives savages. And they thought they were civilizing these lands by building and developing and coming out and manifest destiny and all this shit. And here we are today with native lands being developed on, trying to be civilized. You are all doing the same shit. The same shit.
You know, I'm gonna have to ask you to watch your language.
Yeah, of course you are, because you're gonna sit here and demand civility from people who are being wronged. At what point do you consistently, constantly be wronged? Is it enough? Like, again, like I said, I'm just trying to decolonize my perspective. And the more I hear about how America has absolutely just destroyed native cultures, displaced native people, how can you demand that type of civility from them? They already have the poison and grace. I might not. But is that a reason to dismiss them? You can look at me with all the scorn you want in your eyes. It doesn't change the fact that you are all a part of this colonizing system that's keeping the same outdated seventeen hundreds mentality that native people are savage and that we should develop their fucking lands. I yield the rest of my time, fuck you all.
Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Please come forward. Could we have a raise of hands? Who is left that would like to speak, uh, speak to the council on any item this evening? Okay, very good, thank you. Yes, sir, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is, excuse me, my name is Alex Munson. Here as a Nebraska, and it's pretty obvious why I'm here. I'm a teacher and I can see that my students don't really believe in America as much these days. I think it's because we don't give them many reasons to. I want to, I, I struggled with property. I grew up as a rancher, you know, as a rancher, we struggled with property rights. We built fences and all that stuff and, and, and this isn't, I'm not... You have an opportunity to not just be a cog in this machine. You have an opportunity to make this a country, to make this a system worth believing in, which is one that allows its citizens to be heard. And that is what we just simply don't feel like we're receiving right now is that opportunity, uh, you know? The lawsuit just seemed like a stalling factor. I've been in activism long enough to just see that a lot of these things just seem like stalling so that the machine can keep rolling, you know? It's just, oh, you know, let it keep going, it'll, it'll pass along. And, and I elected or I voted for many of you, hoping that you weren't just gonna be another cog in that machine. And you weren't just gonna let this machine roll over us, especially the indigenous peoples. Please help this country be what it was meant to be. With what we grew up believing we wanted it to be what it was meant to be, which was something where all of us could be heard, where we could all be equally represented, where we could practice our religion and our faith and our spirituality freely. And we know that this machine is powerful enough to move. Move somewhere else. Do something else. You have the money, you have the power, you have the influence. And especially just let us be heard. We know that, I know that this is just another part, but we wanna make it to the appeals. We wanna believe in all of you. We wanna believe in the system. And we wanna believe in what the US is supposed to be. And right now, I don't believe in it. And it's because we all feel silenced. So please help us find that belief in you again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else present that would like to testify on this issue or any other issue before the City Council during public comment? Please come forward. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, that is...
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn. Please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shoep?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero.
We are adjourned.